For a, a targeted, directed, and focused use of the sales tax proceeds if the voters should see fit to pass it, which would be to, to help us stand up an emergency department. Now, we have the EMS as part of the potential funding upon termination of that sales tax. But to go around splitting it up between emergency department and EMS, I, I think, I think takes our eye a little bit off the ball, which is trying to get the emergency room stood up, so. Glad to answer any questions you have with regard. You'll notice that the, the amended language is now reduced to three sentences. We have, we have deleted some of the parts that we felt maybe were a little superfluous. Commissioner, we were trying to make it as simple as we could. And that, I think, is what this, what this language is intended for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I would hope probably, well, I would think that, that statement there would be if we didn't have an ER with two or three years, it's obvious we're gonna have to start buying a lot of ambulances or something different. We gotta change our plan. But, and that's gonna cost lots and lots of money. I, I know the committee members that I've met with support that last one. That it took for five years and it's for ER only until terminated. Now, that's our committee that's out, wanna promote this. I know it's the board's decision, but I want that committee involved with this process too, 'cause we want support of the citizens to help make those decisions and vote for it.
I suppose it could be somewhat ironic that if you have an emergency room, you don't need as many ambulances.
Absolutely, right. It's kind of a horse in the cart.
Not, not, no, I would say that's not a true statement, not as of today. We need, we need the ambulances we have as of today. We need every ambulance that we have.
I, I preface that by saying if we have an emergency room, emergency department.
But we still need exactly the same amount of ambulances and staff that we have today, even if we have an emergency room.
Well, we wouldn't have to buy two or three.
You wouldn't have to add, you wouldn't have to add to it.
No, we would not have to add to it, but what we currently have, the way I took your statement is by saying what we currently have, we would need less, and that's absolutely not true.
Well, it's not saying we wouldn't need less, but we would not need more, if that makes sense.
Nelson, do we have time for you to meet with Charles and the committee again?
Well, we, we wouldn't necessar- you know, we're doing this special meeting if we had the election in April. Um, there is, the clock is ticking, 'cause you have to have forty days, but if, it sounds like May might be a better month even, so if that's the case, we can delay the, the wording on the language.
So, what, uh, sorry, what, what issues do we have with the last one? That seems, out of the three, that seems like a, a decent option. What's people's input on the last one?
Personally, my issue with it is if, I mean, I would say that typically, once a sales tax is passed, it doesn't go away.
Well, we could add the language that, uh, it's be terminated at the sunset or at reevaluated and put on the ballot. You know, again, you know, that language is in there, hey, it's not, you're, we're not stuck with it for five years. If we explicitly said that in the language, then people might be more likely to go for it.
Well, I agree with the comment, a May election would be much better, 'cause we've asked this committee, and I've met with them, they formed, and this is a nice committee the citizens put together, not a county commission committee, let's make that clear. It's a citizens committee that's been formed by citizens.
Not, yeah, and we didn't form it.
We didn't form it.
If people want to form, uh, let's talk about that for a second. Because there's been a lot of people on Facebook talk about committees and all of this stuff. Nobody from the commission formed this committee. This committee was formed on its own by citizens, formed it. If you wanna form a committee, form it. We're not gonna stop you. Plain and simple. That goes with anything. You know, you know, uh, there's, there's a couple of people there that like to put all kinds of long stories and books on Facebook about committees and think they're funny, I think, when they write it. If y'all wanna form a committee, go ahead. We're not stopping you. Form it. Knock yourself out. So, but anyway.
Okay. The committee fully wants to do this right, number one. Number two, they think April's too soon for them to get out and have town hall meetings in Fort Scott and Uniontown. So, they've asked additional time to have this in May to give them opportunity to educate the public on what's going on. And I agree with that. Charles?
Yeah, if, if it, if it is moved to May, then there may need to be a change with the effective date of the sales tax.
Yes.
It's, it was teed up July one, assuming that the election would be in April. So, if you're moving it to May or in some other day, then there would have to be an adjustment in the language of the ballot accordingly.
I think what, you know, obviously, um, with the chairman's permission, Mr. Gentry and myself, and if we'll conference call or have Mr. Commissioner Beth come in and talk about the language. I, I, I don't think we've vetted the problem with the EMS if there isn't an ER, you know, and the funding mechanism for that. I think that, um, the language that came out of Allen County is basically the top one, um, with, um, instead of a hospital, it's emergency department. So, you know, obviously, the, that wheel's been invented before and it's been used in another, uh, county in our state. Obviously, I, I totally understand the parameters and you want, I mean, you want a sunset, you want things to, you want it to go away. We want it to go away. That'd be the home run for us, but the, the EMS system is an important conversation to have amongst the commissioners, because if an REH designation or the emergency room doesn't happen, the taxpayers or someone's gonna have to come up with the money to bolster or make the EMS stronger, 'cause right now their transports are substantial.
And, and, and so, other than number one, that money would be setting in a bank account where we couldn't touch it.
That is correct.
Without having another vote.
That is correct. Or terminating that, having another special election and terminating that, that collection of sales tax for the ER.
And then there's a chance it wouldn't terminate. Let's, I mean, it's worst case scenario.
No, it terminates after five years. It sunsets.
After five years. But I'm just saying that money would be setting in a bucket for five years and we couldn't touch it to help our ambulance if we didn't have an emergency department. That's worst case scenario.
Right, that's worst case.
Plain and simple.
Yes, Charles?
Yeah, just, just to be, uh, underscore a point on that. If there were to be a future vote to either terminate or to amend this absent sales tax, the vote of, of the people, that vote, that election, if you will, could coincide with a general or primary election.
Yes.
It would not have to be a special election funded by the county. It'd simply be added on in the future to coincide with a, with a general election, primary election, and so forth.
Now, if we was to have a special election and cancel this in three years, and, of course, we wouldn't have an ER, then can the commissioners buy ambulance with it at the termination? Because the money's laying there in a bowl.
No, not at the end of the five-year term, the way, yes, it could.
Or it was terminated in a new election.
I don't think you can terminate at the end of year three without, without a election or a special election.
Well, if you had an election and terminated, then could the funds that's laying there be spent on ambulance?
The language in the new question would be yes, but you'd have to put the language in it.
Right, right.
You might find, this is hypothetical now, you might find that there might be an ongoing need for either this sales tax or perhaps a, a reduced sales tax that would then be extended for, for, just for EMS. That could also be an amendment that could be, that could be founded in the future.
Well, my thoughts, I know the commission has a final say, and I appreciate you and Clifton getting together, and Mr. Gentry, but I, I want that committee represented somewhat to have input.
I think Mr. Gentry is part of that, I believe he might, he's, he's got input from that committee, for sure.
So, you could represent the committee's thoughts on reviewing one more time?
Well, we'll obviously do whatever we need to do.
Sure. I think it's very, very important we get the blessing of this committee to help us educate the public, so. And that, you know, we want them to buy into it and be a part of it and support it, so they can do a better job educating the public, and hopefully, the vote will go yes.
You know, the other thing we could probably do is take the first one and add the five-year sunset on it, and that would maybe solve, you know, and, and so you wouldn't have to have another election to rescind this one. It could be actually be used for specifically for the emergency department and the emergency medical services. This is an idea.
If the election's gonna be in May, like, May the fourteenth, what the committee suggested. And I know it's up to us, but we have time to work on it one more week then come back.
I think it's important to get the, get the ballot question done as soon as possible to allow for people to digest it, do the research on it, and make sure they're informed citizens to vote the way they wanna vote.
Yeah. And, again, I want the blessing of the committee, because they're gonna be out there selling this ideal. And if they don't support it, they're not gonna be very good salespeople.
Right.
Nelson, your thoughts?
Well, I think the, uh, I think the sooner the better on putting it on the ballot.
Okay. Anything else?
Make a motion.
I mean, me, I'm, I would, I would, I think it would be better to add the language that you, the other way to end it. You know, either it can sunset or we can vote again. We can have a vote before the five years, though. I think people need to know if they're gonna vote on it that they're not stuck with it for five years necessarily. It just, if it's not overturned, then, then it will sunset at five years.
We can amend the language and come up, you know, have a couple more ideas, and you guys can vote on it at the next commission meeting. It's only four days, four business days from now. If that's all right.
That work for you, Nelson?
Yeah, that's, you know, do we have any other changes we think we might make, other than, I mean?
Um, we'll, we'll make, make some changes to the top one to add some language so it sunsets, and then we'll add some additional language to the third one, and then see if the committee is interested in.
I mean, is there one right now you wanna make a motion for?
Uh, yeah, I'm fine with, if we add, I mean, if we add the, you know, the language that we can vote it out within the five years, I'm fine with the last one, unless someone else has a, you know, a big glaring problem with it, like Mr. Gentry or anybody else.
Do you like the last one?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Out of those, out of those three options presented, it's my favorite. What's, what's your issue with it? What would you like to see changed?
I don't have an issue with the last one, per se. I think the committee would go along with that. They've, uh, everything on there that I've talked to the committee, which is just one member, by the way, but, uh, it certainly dedicated a ER, emergency department. But Clifton's got a good point. It does lock that money up for a period of time. We can't buy ambulance in, under that last one.
Say that, say that again? I, I didn't quite hear all that.
Under the la- current wording of the last proposal, at no time could we buy ambulance out of that money. But I think that's an intent we need to look at, because we can take it back to the voters and terminate it and ask them to spend that money on ambulance. And it's money that come in for a sales tax.
And I'm, and I'm just talk, I'm just talking out loud here, but, you know, if it is repealed, the new language in the new petition or the new thing would have to do something with the money that was collected, so that it would have to either be EMS or whatever language the next commissioner wants to come up with.
Anne?
Uh, we've been, I guess I just would like you to remind yourselves that in the last several weeks, there've been several different types of conversations around this, um, table that have talked about in the future, when, uh, the solar farm gets going and when the south project, project gets going, apparently there's supposed to be a lot of money coming in from those things, so. And I know that's speculation and, and, but it's been said here at this table, you know, those speculative kinds of conversations, and so I guess I would like, uh, the committee to know or to take that into consideration as well, that, um, if we need, um, new ambulances or at any point in time, I guess I would hope that if those projects are up and going and running, that we wouldn't need to extend a sales tax, so.
And I think, you know, I gotta, I gotta clarify a couple of statements that Anne made. Um, obviously, the south project is, um, a different animal than the solar panel project. There is no pilot funds with the south project. That is done through, um, star bonds, TIP districts, private funding. Um, so, obviously, with those types of projects, there usually is a, a time for the, the bond to be paid off, and there really isn't necessarily an impact on, um, property taxes initially. With the, um, solar panel project, there is and has been negotiations concerning a pilot payment, payment in lieu of taxes, and that number has been agreed upon by the commission. We, we're not a hundred percent sure when they're gonna start the project, but most likely, you know, obviously, you know, just like these, this ballot questionnaire that came out the last time we talked, we said four or five times that it was just language that hasn't been approved yet, and we were talking about it. But it was held to be this was the language on social media, and this is what they're gonna vote on, you know? So, um, obviously, I don't wanna be held to any, once again, clarification, which is sad that I have to do it, but we're not sure when we're gonna get the first pilot check. It's not gonna be this year. It's, there's a good chance we'll get it in two thousand twenty-five, and even a better chance if we don't have it in twenty-five and twenty-six. So, um, that pilot money would be close to a million a year, but right now, we don't know exactly when that first check will be cut. The sooner, the soonest it would be cut would be two thousand twenty-five late. But I mean, disclaimer, disclaimer, disclaimer again, you know, we don't, these words are not a contract. I'm, I don't represent anyone except the, you know, the county as a county counselor, but we're not a hundred percent sure when that's gonna occur.
So, th- this, this potential absent sales tax will be one point five to one point seven? That's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, probably one point four to one point seven. You know, if there is a, um, a boom and there is additional people here in town, just like when the wind farms came in, we had, we saw a substantial increase in sales tax revenues, so it could go up in those two or three-year periods.
Okay, so let's say it's one point five million, and we pick the last deal. And the, the best case scenario, an emergency, uh, somebody opens up the emergency department, but they don't need one point five million. They only need seven hundred thousand to be made whole. So, are we just gonna guarantee them eight hundred thousand dollar profit?
That's not my decision.
No, I'm, I'm not. So, I'm not voting yes on this deal, because.
I'm not voting on a blank check for an ER.
Well, that's what you're doing with number three.
But Clifton says we can, we can give it to them. He doesn't say we have to give it to them.
Then what are you gonna do with it? You gonna just put it in the bank and let it sit there for five years?
Well.
It would have to.
As a, as a, as a taxpayer, I would be a little upset with that decision.
I believe that if it's not all spent on the emergency room, that it would have to, upon, it'd have to wait to be.
It would have to wait to be used. And let's say two ambulances. Motors go out, they get in a wreck, whatever. But we can't, we, then we have to raise taxes to purchase two ambulances. When we have money sitting in the bank that we could buy.
Well, and I don't disagree with you at all there, Clifton, but that's not in ten of the sales tax. It's, it's in the sales tax to keep working and working for an ER after two or three years, we might have to give.
Trust me, Jim, I've been doing it for three years.
I know, I know.
Don't lecture me on that.
We, I'm not lecturing you on anything. I'm not lecturing, that's not the way I operate. But you and I always agree to disagree.
I know it.
But I don't want to blow this money that we possibly could get an ER, because we're chasing ambulances. Because Anne is right, if the, the pilot money comes in for the solar panel, we could have six hundred thousand or more there to buy an ambulance. We've made it so far buying ambulances, and I think we'll continue to figure out a way to buy ambulance, with or without the sales tax, with or without the solar panel. We will continue to buy ambulance. My goal is to ask the voters to approve a sales tax and have the wording that they will trust their county commissioners, which that's our time, a lot of them don't trust us, a lot of them don't trust any politician. But I want that wording where they will trust us to do what we've said our goals are and, and move forward. And I'm not lecturing you, Clifton. You know better than that.
I know.
So, I, I don't wanna blow this, 'cause we, people think we're chasing money ambulance. And we are always, since I've sat in this chair, we've chased money for ambulances. But we gotta send a message to the public, folks, we're never gonna, it's only two or three years before we give up on ER. Yes, Anne?
Okay. Thoughts running in my head and about out about as fast as they run in. Okay. So, not having seen the questions, you're gonna vote on one that you want the citizens to be behind? And how, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. We're, we're gonna spend seven to ten thousand dollars to find out that possibly, I'm just devil's advocate here, um, possibly that if you would've tightened up the language here, there, or where, that it might've been more appealing to folks. I, I don't know. I'm just shooting in the dark here.
That's my goal, and it would not be my intent as commissioner sitting here. If John Doe opened an ER tomorrow, they don't automatically get to one point five. They get so much quarterly, and they gotta show proof of loss that.
Well, they're gonna show that, so anyway.
It's not a guaranteed blank check, of course. I'm concerned. Not a guaranteed blank check for, I'm concerned.
The thing about this, whatever we put on the ballot, no matter what we put on the ballot, we can't guarantee we're gonna get an ER. So.
Right.
It's gotta, we have to put language in there, you know, that we don't wanna look like we're trying to, you know, trick people. We're not guaranteeing ER. We're saying this money could possibly be used for an ER if all the other necessary stuff happens. So, yeah, I guess Clifton is right, that third one doesn't put in there that it could be used for EMS, um, prior to sunset, but, you know, I don't know, I don't know if that's a good thing to put in there or not, but obviously we want people to understand that we're not promising an ER with this, even if it gets passed.
Well, this question has to be short, to the point, honest, open, gets us part of the public, and I think there's a lot of movement out there in favor of an ER. I, I think the wrong, worst thing we could do would be cloud this issue with the question and send some mixed messages out to the public, 'cause they don't trust us anyway, and they vote no. Because I'm not sure at the direction determined by the Bourbon County Commissioners.
But how bad is it gonna be if we have nice and straight clear language that this money's gonna go to funding an ER, and then at the end of five years, no ER? That's really, you know?
Well, worst thing's gonna happen, we're gonna have ten million dollars in the bank. I mean, that's the worst thing to buy ambulances for the rest of our lifetimes, but, I mean, that's, that's hypothetical, of course. But you're right, you're right, so.
Um, does this, gosh, since I have not seen the language, um, sorry, um, I, I, I would appreciate the operate, you know, the operating of an ER towards the operating, are, are, do, is this, we're gonna spend this money however we need to spend it in order to get an ER? And if that means hiring some sort of firm to go out for us to hunt down these people and get them on board and, and what? I don't, I, to what's, what scope?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, Anne.
Well, yeah, but here's, here's the, I mean, we've said this, I mean, it, once again, it's a talking point, and, you know, he has thick skin. There, there is no way we can hire a consulting firm to come in and help us with an ER unless it's a lobbying group. You have to have the licensing, Commissioner Beth explained this, that there's only two places that can open an ER for us in the state of Kansas. Standalone ER in the state of Kansas is now Mercy in Pittsburgh, Kansas, and Nevada Regional Medical Center. So the only law, the only person you could hire would be a lobbyist to, um, get the, our House representative and our Senate representative to pass the REH.
But, and I don't wanna lose focus of the dream of maybe having a six or four observation bed. I mean, we talked about applying somebody, hopefully someday, chasing REH.
I think the, I think the, the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, within two years, we're gonna know if we're gonna get the REH designation. Two, I mean, three years maximum, but we'll know within that two to three year period if we're gonna get the REH designation. And the reason we think that is, is that the people have told, I mean, the, the people in the know have communicated that, I think to Commissioner Beth and some other people, that that's kind of the timeframe.
Mark, you had a comment, Mark?
Uh, Mark McCoy, obviously it's a very difficult process and a, uh, very intricate discussions that, that take place throughout this process, and many things are needed and many things are wanted. Uh, if, and I'm just ciphering over here in the corner like so many other people, um, and it sounds to me like this needs to come back at the next meeting because more discussion is what I'm hearing from all. There's a potential, uh, recommendation for a number A, B, or C, what have you. But i- if the language, and again, it might cloud things, and it might just really take this off in another direction, but as a, as a, as verbiage, if after eighteen months, an emergency room is not achieved, up to five hundred thousand dollars may be used to purchase new ambulances in the support of emergency medical services in Bourbon County. The other money continues to come in, let's say year two plus nine months, now we have an emergency room, now we have money to support it, and, and I think that the, the, um, I don't see how the language, I'm not a lawyer, I don't see how the language that's identified there could be allowed to be used for a person to go out and not be part of the emergency hospital. So in other words, a lobbyist is not part of that, a, a recruiter's not part of that. Any, any expenses are not the opening of the emergency, of an emergency room in Bourbon County and the operation of the emergency room of the, in Bourbon County. Those funds should not be used for that, and I think that's a significant and rightfully concern of Commissioner Beth and yours. Nobody here wants it to be used for extraneous things. Uh, so, so some more time maybe, and hopefully we get it all nailed down by Monday, and, you, you, you know, there's, there's lots of thoughts and lots of opinions and lots of ideas, and no one's wrong, and there's no hundred percent right, and we're, we're all, everybody in this room, I believe, is a very concerned citizen in Bourbon County that, that wants to stay here. And I know for me and my family, an emergency room's an absolute minimum. Um, and in the potential of maybe someday having REH, was that the, my time limit?
No.
Uh, the, the, the potential of getting REH is, is something for us to, to set as a target, an objective, but we're at the mercy of the federal government and other people, and, uh, and have to continue to communicate with those federally elected people, uh, like so many other people do around the country, morning, noon, and night, making sure that our voices are, are loudly and clearly heard from Bourbon County, Kansas, that we are just a small piece of the world, but we are a perfect example of rural America that needs this to happen for all the right reasons, and they should not delay because those would all be unacceptable, wrong decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I suggest we go back to the drawing board a little bit. Hopefully come up with a consensus of working with Mr. Gentry, and which he's part of that committee, and I mean, you mentioned Commissioner Beth, but I'd like to sit before Monday if possible.
I'm not part of any committee.
No, you're not a part of the committee. He mentioned your name.
Yeah.
Well, the reason I mentioned his name is I wanted, I wanted input from one of the commissioners just to help with the language, 'cause you have to approve it, and obviously Commissioner Beth has been designated as the healthcare liaison for our community, so I wanted to, we wanted to, Charles Gentry and I wanted to call him to kind of get his input and his ideas of what was happening, so.
Good idea, great idea.
We'll do that again this week sometime, before Monday, obviously.
Okay.
So do people, do people know who to contact if they have, if they have input? Know who to contact on the committee to make their, uh, opinion heard?
Well, I, you know, I, I don't know, once, until the language is approved, um, the, the committee really isn't active. It's just a group that's concerned. I mean, I can, I, I can call, I can talk to Mr. Gentry, and we can disseminate some numbers, you know, telephone numbers for contact, but I don't know if they wanna be contacted yet if there's no language for a petition or for something to put on the ballot.
I'm, I'm, yeah, that's what I'm, I'm curious. No one's reached out to me. I've had conversations with people, but they're kinda, kinda in the same boat I am. It's not the area of expertise as far as coming up with language for the ballot, but, you know, somebody might, might, uh, might have some pretty good ideas about it.
Well, as Mr. McCoy said, nothing is absolutely gonna be perfect, but we'll do our best to make sure that the commissioners are comfortable putting it on a ballot so that we, the commit, the people of our county can vote on it.
Okay, that is.
I do need a, I do need an executive session, but we can wait whenever.
Oh, you're up next. No favor, I'm sorry, Jennifer's up next.
Susan couldn't be here tonight, so she just asked me to get just a little bit of clarification. At the prior meeting, it was, um, determined to give everybody eight hours that worked when the courthouse was closed. We just wanna make sure it's a straight, straight, their straight hourly pay, eight hours regardless of what they've already worked, correct?
Well, my understanding was, uh, people that stayed home got paid eight hours.
Yes, they did.
And the crews that worked got called a, I think on payroll said, stay home courthouse, eight hours. Then they got comped, said a straight time for the hours they worked. Is that right, Clifton?
I would, uh, uh, well, I wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, my, yeah, that's, I mean, if I had been here, I would've expected that it's they get the same pay as everybody else, plus the eight hours that they worked.
Yeah, or six hours they worked, or ten hours they worked.
Yeah.
Okay, so yes, they received time and a half for the hours that they worked, and then they're joined to get an additional eight hours now for being closed. All right, we just wanted to make sure.
Time and a half.
Not second aid, was it Eric? Come in. What did we talk about? Was it second aid, time and a half, or straight?
It was straight.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it would be eight hours for the courthouse being closed, and then the actual eight hours that they worked.
Ten hours, they'd have two hours of time and a half.
It'd be forty hours for the week, so it'd just be regular pay.
Okay, I got you.
Yep.
It was a forty hour number.
Yeah.
That make sense?
That's right. We just wanted some clarification on that, so we can get everybody paid out Friday.
Thank you, thank you.
That's fine, thank you.
Justin Meeks, executive session. I've got a headache, we can take a break. I'm on my fourteenth day of antibody. I got five more days.
You're still red.
Yeah. Oh, boy.
Make it worse.
I know, it might make it feel better. It can rain that day.
Might feel better, but it might just gonna make it worse.
Turn the normal session to action. Oh, my God.
Perfect, adjourn then.
You had the floor.
What do you need? How long? Who?
Um, that's, I'll have, uh, Commissioner Blythe calling on my cellphone, and then I need the other two commissioners, and it'll be ten minutes. It's attorney-client privileged. There is some proprietary information that we're gonna be discussing, but it's mostly gonna be all, um, contracts, um, things of that nature. But there is some proprietary information that'll be discussed also.
Make a motion, go into executive session, case 75, dash 43, 19B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged. In the attorney-client relationship, be three commissioners, uh, Commissioner Blythe, uh, Justin's gonna call Commissioner Blythe on his cellphone, and Justin, three commissioners, Justin, be for ten minutes. We'll return here at six twenty-two.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're going to vote for 93 percent. They're lying. They're going to vote for 93 percent. They're lying. They're going to vote for 93 percent. They're lying.
Probably are, but they are. Probably are, but they are. Probably are, but they are.
They're already voting. They're already voting. They're already voting.
I think it's already done. I think it's already done. I think it's already done.
Did you have to put the copy to Charles? Did you have to put the copy to Charles? Did you have to put the copy to Charles?
I do. I do. I do.
We'll need to make a copy so that we can give it to, uh, the media. We'll need to make a copy so that we can give it to, uh, the media. We'll need to make a copy so that we can give it to, uh, the media.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. I was going to ask about it. I was going to ask about it. I was going to ask about it.
Yeah, I think it's. Yeah, I think it's. Yeah, I think it's. Where's the pile of money from the windmills? Where does it go to? Where's the pile of money from the windmills? Where does it go to? Where's the pile of money from the windmills? Where does it go to?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So. So. So.
My. My. My.
I was there for that, so. I was there for that, so. I was there for that, so.
My guess would be that it's going to Bourbon County. My guess would be that it's going to Bourbon County. My guess would be that it's going to Bourbon County.
It has gone to. It has gone to. It has gone to.
Not, not. Not, not. Not, not.
Percentage of it. Percentage of it. Percentage of it.
Yes. 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 I don't know what that number was. I don't know what that number was. I don't know what that number was.
740,000. 740,000. 740,000.
Are you guys done with your executive sessions?
Yeah.
I'm calling back.
You can try. Whatever he may answer, he may not. Make a motion to resume, uh, normal session, no action. You got anything, Nelson?
Just closing prayer if anybody's interested.
Couldn't hear you.
Just the prayer if anybody interested.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, if, if no one wants to pray, they can leave the room, please. Or you can stay and join us.
Okay, Nelson, you're up, man.
All right. Father in heaven, I wish that you would bless us as we leave here today. I pray that our plans would be in accordance with your will. And you would see our plans unfold and our goals accomplished. Uh, pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Nelson.
Thanks, Nelson. I make a motion to, or you.
Got them all done.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
See you, Nelson. Thanks, man.